Good evening, everyone. It's a regular meeting of the City of Pacific Grove City Council. It's Wednesday, December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one at six P. M. And Ms. Candell, would you please give us a roll call?
Yes, sir. Mayor Pete?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Who?
Council members Emilio?
Here.
Letty?
Here.
McAdams?
Here.
Pedory?
Here.
Tomlinson?
Here.
All are present to be a Zoom webinar, mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Pedory, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Sure. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Next, we have approval of the agenda. And I'd like to move, suggest moving item eleven A. That's the one-half percent sales tax ballot measure to immediately following approval of the agenda. That would be before the presentations. And have a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve.
Second.
And a vote, please.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Emilio?
Aye.
Councilmember Spadory?
Aye.
McAdams?
Aye.
Letty?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Aye.
And Mayor Pete?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. We'll now move directly to item eleven A. Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I do not have a PowerPoint tonight, but joining me, of course, is the city attorney, the city clerk, and our assistant city manager for this item. I'll be brief. This item is coming to you pursuant to direction provided at your last city council meeting, wherein council asked that we bring all requisite items needed in order to potentially convene a special election on April twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two. There are three items as part of this agenda report. One is a resolution declaring fiscal emergency. The second is a resolution calling for a special election in April of two thousand and twenty-two. And third is an ordinance allowing for a one-half cent sales tax increase. If these items are to be approved this evening, pardon me, all three require a unanimous vote of the city council. All three items that are just mentioned would need to be unanimously approved in order to move forward. All the items before you tonight have been reviewed either by the California Department of Tax and C. Administration or the Monterey County Office of Registrar-Registrar Recorders. Excuse me again. I don't have anything additional. Other than that, I trust you all have had the opportunity to read the agenda report. Again, the city attorney, the assistant city manager, city clerk are all here with me to answer any questions. And with that, I conclude my brief presentation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have any public comment on this item?
Thank you, mayor. At present, I see no hands raised.
Let's just give it a moment. Okay. Let's bring it back to council. Councilmember Coletti.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've got a question for the city attorney. Mr. Laredo, the proposed ordinance that is attached to our agenda report, that that document, as it is attached, as it is presented this evening, has been shown and has been verified to be in compliance by the C. D. T. F. A. Is that correct?
That is correct. We showed them this both in draft form. And again, in in next to final form and then in final form. So they have seen these exact words that are before you.
Okay, thank you. That's all, Your Honor.
Councilmember Pedory.
Thank you, Mayor. I had just a quick question. For the agenda item, it says the last time this did not go through was because it did not reference the general purpose tax, nor did it reference Pacific Grove municipal code, chapter six point zero seven. In this measure, I don't see any reference to Pacific Grove municipal code six point zero seven. I was wondering if that's okay or not.
If I may, through the mayor, it is in the title of the matter, the ordinance. It says amending chapter six point zero seven, and it says to increase the general purpose transactions and use tax. The in the body, section two of the ordinance, it mentions chapter six point oh seven, and it makes the these are the provisions of that code that are going to be amended, and the entirety of that portion of the ordinance referses to six point oh seven oh one oh through and including oh nine oh. I'm sorry, through including point one one zero. So.
If I may, I just want to clarify. The previously, I'm just looking at the agenda report. It says the measure did not properly reference it. And I'm just looking at the section which says city measure. And there's only like five or six lines in here. Does that measure need to reference this or not?
Oh, that does not. And and one of the reasons is is that there is a precise word count that applies to that. And so that is the short form of the ballot measure. And we are only allowed seventy-five words. And this, I believe, the count is seventy-four words, if I'm correct, if my recollection is correct. But we did confirm this both through the city clerk and with the registrar. So the the short ballot measure is accurate as stated.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Emilio.
You, Mayor. For Mr. Laredo, on the recommendation, should they be adopted? There's three here. Do we adopt one at a time? Make a motion on one at a time, or can you do all three?
I would recommend that you adopt each of them separately to clarify the council's intent.
Okay, thank you.
And I just want to remind folks for the record. This is not an additional half percent sales tax above what was what we thought was passed by the voters a year ago. This the sales tax ballot measure from a year ago was flawed. And this action will put it on the ballot, as Mr. Harvey said, on April twelfth for a special election, and will have the same effect or the same intent as what we had at the last general electric election, November two thousand and twenty. So with that, Councilmember Emilio, would you like to run through the motions, please?
Okay. I'll make a motion on number one, adopt a resolution declaring a fiscal emergency.
We need a second for each one. A vote, please.
Councilmembers Emilio?
Yes.
Tomlinson?
Yes.
Mayor Pete?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Aye.
Councilmembers Coletti?
Aye.
McAdams?
Aye.
Pedory?
Aye.
Got everybody there. Motion carries seven zero.
Councilmember Emilio.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. To adopt a resolution calling for an April twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two special election for a half cents, half cent sales tax increase.
Again.
And a vote, please.
Councilmember Emilio?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedory?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Mayor Pete?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Aye.
Councilmembers Coletti?
Aye.
McAdams?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
The for the third one, make a motion to adopt an emergency ordinance.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Councilmember Emilio?
Yes.
Mayor Pete?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Aye.
Councilmembers Coletti?
Aye.
McAdams?
Aye.
Pedory?
Aye.
And Tomlinson?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you all very much. And now if you like saying we're returning to our regularly scheduled program. But in this case, it's on to presentations. And Mr. Caleb Schneider, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I have a brief presentation to share. Sandra, if I could share that, that would be great.
Yes, sir. Right ahead.
And missing the button. Sure screen. There we go. There we go. All right. It only took two years. I finally figured it all out. Great. Let's run that presentation. Great. Well, thank you, everyone, for being here. I've given you a brief update on the Monarch Butterfly Sanctuary today. I'm going to run through the first half dozen so slides because you've seen them before. Quick outline, we're just going to review the five main questions about butterflies. Go through a brief description of the Monarch Butterfly Sanctuary. Discuss the current state of the monarchs and the status of the Monarch Butterfly Habitat Management Plan. So brief overview, overview, we're going to answer the who, what, when, where, and why of monarch butterflies in Pacific Grove. So monarch butterflies carries meta-creatures on our city emblem. It is a beautiful creature that has been gracing the presence of Pacific Grove since before, you know, European settling. And we're very happy to see them return each year, except for last year, which I'll get into more detail later. So the monarch butterflies in the winter come to the the central coast to do their overwintering, which is important. They need this area to receive shelter from the harsh winter elements. When they leave here, they go to the north and east of us, but not farther than the Rockies, where they carry on several other generations, which is what makes the generation here unique. Those generations that are not in the overwintering sites are stationary, so they stay relatively in the same area. The generation that comes to Pacific Grove and leaves is the only migratory generation. So in the fall, they arrive, they're looking for supplemental nectar sources and shelter from the elements, particularly freezing temperatures. They can't operate well below fifty degrees. They need protection from storms, and they'll leave in the spring after mating and utilizing some of our nectar. So you can see here is a map of Pacific Grove, that yellow section right there in the middle. That's about two acres of the Monarch Butterfly Sanctuary. We'll just zoom into that right here. We've got Grove acre on this side, and then Ridge Road on the right-hand side. Ridge Road is where you typically park and then enter from the east. It's roughly the size of the inside of the football stadium or a high school baseball diamond. So it's not a very large area. And just to give you kind of a quick overview, this is what it looked like in two thousand and seven. And what it looks like roughly today, we've had quite a bit of infill. A building has been removed. Nectar beds have been installed. There's a permanent restroom there now. And we continue to try to care for the sanctuary so that we provide the best habitat possible for the monarch butterflies. So as current, the monarch butterfly official count is fourteen thousand twenty-five. That's quite a bit more than last year, which was zero, and the year prior, which was just in the hundreds. You know, in all of California, there was only two thousand butterflies last year, and this year we're estimating two hundred thousand as of now. Now, that might seem remarkable. Well, it is remarkable. The monarch butterflies seem to be on their way back. But if what I told you there was two hundred thousand butterflies just five years ago, people would have been devastated. So we got to keep that in mind as we're thinking about the monarch butterflies and their total population. But it's good. We're in, we're seems like in a positive direction, but the general trend is still, you know, year over year, decade over decade, I should say, there is a decrease going on. So there's still a dire need of protection. So here in Pacific Grove, what we're moving forward with is a habitat management plan. So what that will do is that will address the monarch butterflies and other pollinators, which take on similar needs inside of Pacific Grove. What the Habitat Management Plan will do will allow us to address in a very systematic way what it is the monarch butterflies need and other pollinators in the Pacific Grove. The city is collaborating with the Monterey Resource Conservation District and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. The scope of this Habitat Management Plan will encompass the Monarch Butterfly Sanctuary and be specific to the sanctuary itself and what should be carried out there, and discuss more broadly what the potential there is at George Washington Park as well. But it's going to be broader than that. We need to look at the monarch butterfly habitat isn't just the sanctuary. It is the entire Pacific Grove. The entire peninsula has an impact on our growth, but we can only control what's inside of our city boundaries. So that that plan needs to look at policies and practices citywide and how those impact monarch butterflies. We're going to be seeking funds. The city has already budgeted twenty-five thousand dollars toward a Habitat Management Plan, although that is significantly less than what we're anticipating we'd be needing. A plan of this scale and with the amount of public input and public inclusion in the process, we're anticipating a project that's going to be much closer to the six figures, possibly a hundred fifty thousand dollars. So we're seeking outside funds. So through the State Resource Conservation Board, we are looking to receive funding through the Monterey Resource Conservation District. So the Resource Conservation District is going to apply for a much larger pot of money. A portion of that money is going to be allocated through the Monterey Resource Conservation District. And then the city's project will fit inside of that. The 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 amount of money is too great for the city to apply for it itself individually. It has to come through this kind of tiered process. And with that, I'll answer any questions if that's appropriate.
Are there any council comments? If the public wishes to comment on this, please reserve those comments to the general public comment period coming up.
Oh, sorry, and, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I don't mean to interrupt, but if if anyone would be interested in more detail, this matter will also be discussed to a greater extent at the next B. N. R. C. meeting next Tuesday. So a week from yesterday.
Great. Well, I just a couple of thoughts just to kick off any comments. Thank you very much, Mr. Schneider, for the clear presentation. And you used the word remarkable. I think that's an excellent word to describe how the butterflies that leave Pacific Grove at the end of winter are not the butterflies that come back. It takes generations to come back, and it's truly remarkable or maybe a mystery as to how generations in the in the future find their way back. And we absolutely need, I thought your words were well put. It's great that we see the comeback of monarchs to Pacific Grove and the West Coast. But we cannot rest on this issue. We need to do all we can to help foster more monarchs. Councilmember Pedory.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick questions. Thanks for the presentation, Caleb. The Habitat Management Plan, is that like a yearly kind of like plan which gets revised yearly based on how the monarchs are migrating, et cetera? Or is that, is there like a cycle basically for the revising the plan?
Through the mayor, if I may, that is a great question. So what we've typically been doing is getting an annual assessment of the sanctuary and comments as to what could be done year to year. But we really need to start thinking about this on a decadal or century level. The trees that are needed to protect the monarchs and to provide their habitat are trees that we need to plant and foster beyond our lifetime. So that's the sort of thing this Habitat Management Plan would address. It'd be significantly different than what we've been doing so far, which is looking at it year by year. This plan is going to be something that looks at how we're going to manage monarch butterfly habitat and pollinator habitat in general across the city over the next century or so. So it sets us up for success for our grandkids.
Okay, that's fantastic news. The the hundred and fifty thousand grant, is that also on a periodic basis? Is that something that we can apply through the tiered system every so often, or is that like a one-time thing?
It's a one-time grant, but it's over the course of, you have about four years to utilize it all. There, this type of grant isn't very temporally reoccurring. It's if you have a great idea, bring it to the board, and then they might allocate your funds. But we're, you know, there was a significant amount of money that was allocated for this in the state budget that was, you know, substantially more than in previous years. So while they might have been able to manage a grant for something on the tune of a hundred thousand dollars in the past, now there's such an abundance of of money flowing towards this sort of endeavor that it has to be managed and kind of broken down district by district to us. So there there could be more funds that we could apply for in the future, but right now we're just seeking for developing a plan.
Understood. Thanks again for the details.
You're welcome.
Well, thank you again. And now moving on to council and staff announcements. Let me check in first with our city attorney. Do you have any council, any announcements?
No, Your Honor, there are no announcements to be made by my office.
All right, Mr. Harvey, staff announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two. One is due to the recent power outages that we've been experiencing. I've been advised that our broadcast is having about a four-minute delay this evening. So I wanted to make the council and the public aware of that. Again, it's about a four-minute delay from what you're seeing here on Zoom. They're working on it, but that's what's going on currently. And then secondly, I'd like to turn things over to Ms. Godwin, our library director, who has an announcement. Ms. Godwin, please.
Good evening and happy holidays. I'm very pleased to announce that the library, starting in January, is going to extend our hours. Instead of being ten to one on Saturdays, we will be open from ten to five. This is going to be starting on January eighth. Thank you very much. The public has been very pleased with the hours that we've been open so far, and this will extend it significantly. Thank you.
Sounds good. And and I'm seeing that we have one attendee that well, we're going to have general public comment here in a moment. So hopefully, we will capture, even with that delay, all the public comments. Do we have any other, do we have any council announcements? Councilmember Emilio.
Thank you. Please, I've got three particular announcements dealing with the SURF project. Right now, it's in the estimated two-year completion for the preparation of the SURF project. It's a sub bus, it's a busway and bus transit system that will originally start with Pacific Grove, Monterey Seaside Marina, and then down from Salinas to King City, straight shot. And it'll be a bus lane only for buses and to avoid the traffic. But right now, we're still estimating a two-year timeline to complete the preliminary design. The other item I wanted to talk about is, you know, the December seventh Monterey Peninsula Herald, there was dealing with water wasters that may face fines. I know we've had a lot of rain, but it isn't, we're still in a drought system. Anyway, they've talked about dealing with everything from water landscaping so that it doesn't create a runoff to not washing or anything outside lawns and things forty-eight hours after the thing, after but it is on the December seventh website. And then the other item I wanted to talk about was recently, we had December seventh in regards to Pearl Harbor. I just wanted to mention that the one ship, one destroyer went down in twelve minutes with four and twenty-nine soldiers. Everything from Marines, Air Force on that ship. A total, three was sunk destroyers, and twenty-one hundred soldiers went down with those soldiers, and that just occurred December seventh. There's eighty veterans still alive from Pearl Harbor. And that's my report.
I have a few announcements. Let's start off with the dates of coming up. We're still looking for people to apply to our boards, commissions, and committees. And the city clerk's office is accepting applications to Monday. We're we don't have a huge backlog of volunteers, so please give it some serious consideration to help your community and meet some people, do some good things. That's Monday, please, is the deadline for all boards, commissions, and committees. Our, and next on January twelfth, we're we'll be having the American Tin Canery special meeting during by city council. It will be a single agenda item. That's January twelfth. And following that, the next week on a Wednesday, also January nineteenth, that will be our next regular city council meeting. That'll be our first city council, regular city council meeting of the year. That's January twelfth. And last but not least, I think everybody should know by now, the state, we have a mask mandate. Your council is all at home, so we don't have masks on it, but indoors and all public spaces through the middle of January, I hope that you'll comply and help keep us all safe. And with that, let's go to general public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Kathy Wooton, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. I wanted to acknowledge and thank Caleb Schneider for his service to our community. I know that he'll be leaving his position at the end of the month, and he will be sorely missed. His departure is a loss to the community, I think. And so thank you very much, Caleb. On that same note, I know that the city is now recruiting for his replacement. And I think that the position of environmental manager is really a critical and very important position. And I hope that the city manager and the assistant city manager will find and hire someone who has the educational and experiential background that will background that will really help the city in terms of the environmental awareness that we need to have, as well as hopefully some experience with wildlife, including our pollinators. I think that's a real critical hire for the city. We have so many issues going forward. The other thing I think that is really critical, and I think that Caleb did a good job this afternoon, this evening, talking about the management plan for the monarch sanctuary, which again is a very critical part of dealing with such a part of the city, basically the soul of the city, which is the monarch sanctuary and our part in sustaining the monarchs on the West Coast, Central Coast. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bob Oliver, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm going to take this time to speak on the elm tree at Jewel Park. We have transcripts of all of the different meetings that have looked at this issue. And because those transcripts are available or written, you may contact me and I will send you the link or the PDF file on that if you choose to look at it. In these transcripts, you learn that your different meetings, at those meetings that you were misinformed actually on the events regarding the elm tree. And in the BNRC meeting, Mr. Weisfiss states that the tree was of moderate risk, even though the two arborists that we found, which were your former forestry management person Frank Ono and How Lee, who I personally know, and he's been in the tree business. He started that when he was about 14. He's now 74 and quite experienced through the years, having met with people that know how to deal with trees and maybe a non-traditional method in a sense that there are a lot of forgotten ways of helping trees to survive in cities or survive at all. In this case, the elm, we believe is at a minimal risk. It didn't get blown over in this last storm. And to be a little sarcastic, there were six to eight telephone poles in Monterey that blew down. Call it in quite a mess, but the elm tree still stands. And we have no expectations that the elm tree is going to fall on its own. Only our worry is that you will continue to make the wrong decision on the elm and cut it down. So we will be in court tomorrow. I know you don't offer often, how many people are listening to this meeting? I thought you said one, but I don't know. At any rate, if you contact me at boboliver9@gmail.com, I will send you the files on the meetings and you can see for yourself where you were misled. But you were misled and your arborist states that the tree is of moderate risk. We believe it to be low risk. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa Chiany, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. I had a couple of comments. First, well, Kathy Wooton said what I would have said, but much, much better. I appreciate Caleb's report. I appreciate all that Caleb has done. He was so well-qualified for his position for the Environmental Programs Manager. And it's absolutely critical that we get an outstanding replacement for him with the amazing natural resources, environmental resources of all sorts that the Pacific Grove has. And then about the mayor's comment encouraging people to apply for boards and commissions positions. I hope we will get lots of applicants. I attend many of the board and commission meetings. We need good applicants. There are vacancies. And I wonder, though, how inviting it is with the lack of respect that is often shown to the boards and commissions, such as the council overturning BNRC's decision. Rude comment made regarding planning commission's decision on ATC. But back to BNRC's decision on the elm. As Bob Oliver stated, we have the transcript now. I can send you the page numbers and line numbers so you can hear Megan McKenna's very careful, gentle, but persistent questioning of the city arborist until he divulged that his report, his tree report, is not based on the current condition of the tree, even though his report says, you know, it's based on current conditions. It is based on, he admitted, it's based on what the condition of the tree would be if they cut the roots some more. So on that basis, he called it a high-risk tree when he said himself it would be moderate risk if the roots weren't cut. And the roots are not being cut. No, the whole tree is being cut, not following the city's landscape, what are they called, urban forestry standards. So good luck with finding good members for boards and commissions. I hope you can do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I see no other hands raised except for Mr. Oliver, and he has already had the opportunity to speak. I'm sorry, one just was raised. Carmelita Garcia, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you so much and welcome. Thank you for your service and happy holidays. Merry Christmas. I want to speak this evening to you about a group of Pacific Grove citizens who have been working on our native deer, and the group is called PG Deer Awareness. Its mission is to prevent harm to our native deer by raising awareness. And I want to thank city manager Ben Harvey, chief Madalone, Carla Bitter from the museum, and all the other city staff who helped to get the information that we have developed onto the city's website. That's very exciting. And also, the rack card that has been designed is at the city hall, in the police department, at the museum. Some merchants have it, and Moammar of the Chamber distributed 25 packets to our local hotels and other facilities. So we're very grateful for that. And then on December 5th, I'm sure some of you saw it on the front page of the Herald. There was an article regarding the deer and what this small group has been doing. So Biden signed the Build Back Better bill on Monday, and there's $40 billion that's been earmarked for conservation. Biodiversity is what they're calling this particular part of the bill. And there's like $30 million. I lost the website on my laptop, sorry. But anyway, it's to go towards wildlife and conservation, things like that. And so I would encourage the staff to look more into that and see if perhaps something can be done for our native deer. It's very important to protect them. And also, we're on the Chamber website. And I want to give another shout out for considering a wildlife protection ordinance. And also, we would like to begin tracking injuries and deaths of the deer, most likely in 2022. So thank you again very much for your support, and we're continuing to move forward. There's discussion now of doing a TV ad and perhaps an educational video for schools and whoever might be interested in looking at it. So thank you very much. We all appreciate your help.
Thank you.
I know the hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Harvey, are we still with a four-minute delay? You know?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we still are experiencing a slight delay. If that should change, I will raise my hand to let you know that. Thank you.
Okay, well, for those folks that might be getting on the phone, they're watching it on TV with the delay, let's keep an eye, Ms. Kendell and I will keep an eye on the hands up for, from attendees. Okay. Onto the consent agenda. Anyone from council wishing to pull a consent agenda item? Okay, I'm not seeing any. How about the public? Anyone from the public wishing to pull a consent agenda item?
No hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
We have approval of the consent agenda, Your Honor.
Second.
May we have a vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Potem Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Emilio?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Councilmembers Coletti?
I'll vote aye, but would like to have a no vote recorded on 7B. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers Pedori?
Aye.
Ann Tomlinson?
Aye.
Motion carries 601 with Councilmember Mick Adams absent and a no vote on 7B by Councilmember Coletti.
Thank you. In summary, council just approved minutes from our December 1 meetings. We've held a second reading and adopted an ordinance to amend the salary classification schedule, modifying salary ranges for cashier, intern, lighthouse, docent coordinator, recreation assistants 1 and 2, and recreation supervisor. And we have held the second reading of an adopted ordinance to amend the salary classification schedule, modifying the salary range for a construction project manager, management analyst, and principal planner. Both of those are from Director Livia. Thank you. We've held a second reading, reading and adopted an ordinance amending this year's fiscal budget. Thank you, Director Hannah. We've received a check register report for November from Miss Legosca. Thank you. Also, from Miss Legosca, we've received a core revenue status report for November. We've received a report on efforts to put Status of Documents Management System posting of online agreements. Status report of work for us. Thank you, Ms. Kendell and Mr. Casimy. We've received a report on Monterey Water Board in a Board of Directors Year in Review from Mayor Potemory Smith. Thank you. And a local emergency actions report from Mr. Harvey, and none were taken recently. We've received or we've approved an agreement for professional services with Harrison Associates for contract planning from Director Hunter and authorized execution of an agreement with Duke's Root Control from Director Go. Thank you. And we've appointed Councilmember Pedori as the alternate board member on the Monterey-Salinas Transit Board of Directors and received minutes from Sandra Kendell from the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Task Force from their meetings in September and October. And with that, that brings us to item 11B. Director Livia is amending the salary schedule again, or about to. Ms. Livia, floor is yours. Welcome. And you are muted.
That's probably the phase of this year. You're on mute. Good evening, everyone, mayor, council members, staff, members of the public. I don't have a presentation for tonight. So probably a few months ago, city council approved a part-time IT support specialist position in the current fiscal year budget. This is a new classification that is currently not listed on the salary classification schedule. Staff is recommending an amendment to the salary classification schedule to add this new position. The job description and salary were included in the agenda report. And so that concludes my report.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
We do. Mr. Mayor, Bob Oliver, you have the floor.
Yes, welcome, Mayor. You mentioned the sewer the sewer contract a moment ago. Is this not going to be up for discussion? I tried to raise my hand during that, that comment.
Well, we've just, we've just passed it, I realize.
You didn't open it up for comments.
No, no, the procedure for
And I had my hand up, excuse me.
Okay, well, I'm not sure what to say. We I didn't see your hand up, and I don't believe the city clerk did at the time.
I realize that, and you seem to be having still a problem with that.
But, Mr. Oliver, why don't you go ahead and make your comments right now?
Thank you. Appreciate that. If that was approved tonight for that funding, I think it was somewhere around $66,000. The issue, it's the first time I've ever heard it discussed, and there was no discussion on it. It's a rather large sum of money. And the real concern here is that, from my standpoint, that is, I worked to get Roundup out of our communities for the last 20 years. That was quite a long time it took before it was admitted that that stuff was no good for human beings, animals, or anything else. And I think some of our communities are still using it. In fact, it may be still being used in Pacific Grove, that I'm not certain of at this point. But the product that you want to put in our sewer system is very toxic to the extent that there are records that the city has from the Water Management District, I think in Marina, that ask, what is this stuff that you're going to put into our sewers that are going to dissolve roots of trees and other plants that have breached into the sewer system? And when they dissolve that root and into the root system and then back into the environmental earth around that, are those toxins then going to be flowing down into the sanctuary as well? So what I hear in the grapevine is that we're not doing a very good job here in Pacific Grove and that we're continuing to contaminate the area. I think this should be open for further discussion, as I believe that the sewer system here is somewhere about 120 years old, between 120 and 140 years old. And it has lots of problems that haven't been addressed in many years. Between 120 and 140 years old and it has lots of problems that haven't been addressed in many years, at least for the last 20. So, I would ask that you look into the funding that has been set aside for sewer repair and give us a complete update before you spend any money at this time and on this particular item. I think it's inappropriate until the community learns what is it that you're going to put in there that's going to leach into our land.
Thank you, Ms. Shear.
Lisa Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome. Thank you. I am sure that Ms. Livia would have answered my questions if I had managed to call her, which I did not. But, I just, about the IT support specialist, I didn't see anything that told us or reminded us, if we've been told before, how many hours that support specialist works and how many IT people we actually have. And of course, it would be lovely if the public could contact somebody in the IT department directly instead of bugging Ms. Kendell all the time, which I just am so reluctant to keep doing. But, we have a lot of issues with our IT system. And so, definitely, we need the support specialists, but it would be good to know how many hours and how many IT specialists we have and if there's any way for them to be accessible directly by the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I see no other hands raised except for Mr. Oliver's, Mr. Mayor, and I believe he has spoken unless you'd like to allow him to
I think it's time for council.
Thank you.
Discussion. And I'm going to kick off council discussion by asking the questions. How many IT personnel do we have? And are they full-time or part-time, Ms. Livia?
Thank you. Currently, we have three positions. Obviously, we have the Deputy Director of IT Services, Mohammed. And then, we have a IT Program Manager. And then, we previously had an intern position that was assisting with IT. And the reason we wanted to move this position forward is we do need somebody with experience that can hit the ground running. That intern left, I believe, sometime over the summer. This position that we're filling currently is a part-time position at 20 hours a week. The IT Program Manager position is a 30-hour-a-week position. And then, the Deputy Director of IT Services is a full-time 40-hour position.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor Potemperie Smith?
I'll second that one also.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Thanks, Mayor. Ms. Livia, can you answer Ms. Chiani's question about whether or not this, you know, addition to staff would allow the IT folks to be able to help members of the public? You know, what is the best course of action for challenges being faced by the public to access this, you know, kind of online world that we're all navigating in? We want the most maximum participation to be easy and possible for everybody. I will say that I remember meetings when we were back in person and we never had 70, 80, 90 attendees ever. And so, there's some things that have been good about being online with the meetings, but we don't always hear about those who are really challenged by it and and I feel for those folks. So, will the adding of this person, as far as you know, maybe the city manager is the better person to ask, like, from what their workload would be? Are we going to be able to offer that to the public? I think that's a great question to either of you.
Why don't I jump in on that question? This person specifically is not being brought on board to field questions and address challenges from the public. But with that said, we can certainly take a look at our website, see if we can maybe add a button on the front side where people could submit an inquiry if they're having an issue. We, as we're increasingly putting more and more online and doing more and more digitally, we need more and more IT staff to support the organization. So, I think we can do our best to address this concern from the public. Maybe we can look at our website and see if there's a better way to submit a work order for a concern. I think we can take that on. But, this person is not specifically being brought on for that purpose. And I hope I answered your question. If not, please let me know.
Absolutely. I wasn't expecting they'd be brought on for that purpose, but I think that if it's a concern of the public that there's, you know, even just a few that are having those challenges, giving them a way to work through that and adding that to our scope of what we offer, I think is a good idea in this digital online platform and how we're navigating these days. So, thank you. And I fully support the salary increase. Thanks.
Councilmember Coletti?
Thank you, Your Honor. I do have a question for either the city manager or our information officer. And it is following up on Lisa Chiani's comment. Is there an internal help ticket portal for IT issues? Okay, I see the city manager nodding his head. Most agencies have that. Perhaps we could open that up or feed into that via the public, a public webpage, a publicly available webpage, so that perhaps IT tickets might come from the public as well. So, that might, you're not introducing a new workflow per se, but you are allowing other people to get involved in it. So, thank you very much.
Councilmember Emilio?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to add that I've there's not one computer in City Hall. There's a ton of them. And, for example, this after the noon time, I was in there and there was a computer that was down and they're waiting for IT to work on it. I also personally had my city laptop compromised approximately six, seven weeks ago. And the few that were there worked on it and it was immediate. So, I think there's a lot to do within City Hall for IT. I think that's very important. I just want to make that comment. They've always been immediate.
Well, I realized that we took a bit of a tangent here, but I also want to endorse the comments, you know, concern from the public and in comments, suggestions by councilmembers Tomlinson and Coletti. And I guess I'm thinking, well, if there's less people coming to the counter, coming to City Hall, then they're interfacing, as Mr. Harvey, you stated, they're interfacing through the web. And now, we need to do a really good job then. Your comments, your thoughts on that? Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I agree with you. Actually, if you don't mind, I wanted to provide you, speaking of digital updates, an update on the broadcast. If that's okay, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
I was incorrect earlier with the situation we were having. The situation was we couldn't start the broadcast until approximately four minutes after six. So, from four minutes after six forward, we have been broadcasting as per normal. But, as per normal, when you are watching the television broadcast, there is a lag. It's about 25 seconds from what you see on Zoom. So, anyway, thank you for letting me announce that. That's all I had.
All right. Good. Thank you for that. May we have a vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Protem Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Emilio?
Aye.
Councilmembers Coletti?
Aye.
Pedori?
Aye.
Tomlinson?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Motion carries 601 with Councilmember McAdams absent.
Thank you. And next on our agenda, 12A, Lovers Point Pier Assessment. Deputy Director Hallaby, welcome.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. I am going to quickly share my screen. All right, just looking for confirmation that you guys can see that, okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, the item before you tonight is the Lovers Point Pier Assessment Award of Contract. The recommendation associated with this item is to authorize an agreement with GHD for the Lovers Point Pier Assessment in an amount not to exceed $99,852. So, as you recall, in December of 2020, approximately a year ago now, during winter storms, the seaward tip of the Lovers Point Pier was severely damaged, resulting from wave run-up and wave impact forces during a storm. The images on this screen illustrate the damage. There were several large pieces of the fascia that were dislodged from the tip of the pier. Immediately following the damage, we closed the tip of the pier to ensure safety and the pier remains closed today until we can make adequate repairs and ensure safety. In addition to closing the pier, immediately after the damage was incurred, we consulted with a geotechnical and coastal engineering firm to look for their repair recommendations. But ultimately, because minimal information was available and is available on the pier structure and how it was constructed, it was determined that additional exploration would be needed prior to development of any sort of repair recommendations. And as a result, we brought forth a project through the Capital Improvement Program with $100,000 budget, which was approved by the City Council for the Lovers Point Pier Repair Project. This would be a multi-year project with a current year and that $100,000 budget moving, putting the city towards doing this pier assessment and providing the city with information on how to best proceed. And that subsequent years would return for consideration in future CIPs for actually constructing those repairs. So, following the allocation of funding through the budget process and through the CIP, we issued a request for qualifications. And that occurred in July. In August, the requests for qualifications closed and three statements of qualifications were received by the firms noted on the screen here. And then, in October, we conducted panel interviews with each of the three firms. The panel was comprised of Community Development Department staff and public work staff. Ultimately, following that process, GHD was selected as the desired firm to complete the scope of work. They've got a tremendous amount of experience doing, assessing and facilitating the repair of various coastal infrastructure. They've done quite a bit of work for local municipalities up and down the coast. They've done work for the City of Pacifica, the City of Berkeley. They've also done some federal projects for the Navy and the National Park Service as well. So, they're very equipped and very well qualified to complete the scope of work for this project. And the scope of work includes peer investigation. This objective of this task is to gather the surface and subsurface information on the pier structure and the surrounding rock riprap. Again, this is to determine how the pier is constructed and its current condition. This is really vital data and information that will help determine interim repair solutions and longer-term repair options if needed. The second aspect of the scope of work is interim repair design solution. So, GHD, following that investigation and that exploratory engineering, would devise an interim repair solution to protect the damage end of the pier. And this is actually really important in preventing further damage and degradation of the pier and ensuring safety. This phase would include all the necessary permit support and would include all the deliverables that would be required to put the project out to bid. And they will also provide grant support. So, they will help the city seek grant opportunities that align with the recommended repair options. Again, this is important because it will help with funding when we return in a future year CIP to actually move forward with any construction. So, again, the recommendation is to authorize this agreement for the pier assessment. The contract will allow us to commence that phase approach that I talked about to addressing the pier. Again, this initial contract and that full $100,000 budget for the current fiscal year would be towards the investigation of the pier structure and that interim design solution, which is the first step on the road to repairs. Really can't do much until we know how the pier is constructed and what its current condition is. And then, in the future, we would return as part of a future CIP project for funding of either the short-term repairs or the longer-term repair options. And with that, I conclude my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Do we have any comments from the public?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Anthony Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Peak and members of the City Council. I think the idea of studying the pier's condition is an excellent idea. However, I think the notion of doing the second part of this and third part of it, the interim repair design solutions are not necessary until you really understand the conditions. So, I think signing up for that is a mistake. I think what you should do instead of signing up for that is do the other part of this project, which is to study the marine environmental conditions around it. You're not going to get a permit to do anything unless that permit acknowledges and addresses the potential impacts to the marine environment. The tip of the pier has fallen off. I think it's a good word, tip of the pier. Maybe you don't need the tip of the pier. Maybe the investigation will determine that the tip of the pier could fall off and go away, the rest of it be removed without damaging the environment and then leave it at that. Or repair the base of the pier without an interim design solution to replace the tip of the pier. So, I think it's the context in which you're planning to do this project. I think the consultants are good consultants. They're well qualified to do it. But I think you need to do this one step at a time and not assume you're going to design the replacement of the tip of the pier. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know the hands raised, Mr. Mayor. I just had one raised. Inga Lawrence and Doimer, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to completely agree with Mr. Chiani. That is such a well-spoken assessment because you don't necessarily need that tip of the pier. And we do need our marine life. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No other hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
All right, council discussion? Councilmember Coletti?
Thank you, Your Honor. A question for Ms. Hallaby. You mentioned the first deliverable will be a site investigation report. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And what is the timeline or expected timeline on receiving that report?
I believe they estimated like 10 to 12 weeks.
Okay.
On commencement of work, yeah, for that initial report.
Right.
But that is just an estimate at this point.
Maybe in three months, we might see a report, right?
10 to 12 weeks would be my best guess.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you for that. And as I understand the agenda report, nothing is going to proceed until we receive that first deliverable. Is that correct?
That's correct. So, that first deliverable would allow us to know what our options are. So, nothing would be designed or engineered in terms of that interim repair solution until we understand how it's constructed and what the options are.
Thank you.
I had a, maybe a little different slant on the question raised by Mr. Chiani. Have you had any Have you had any discussions with the um, Coastal Commission on this, on the pier?
At this point, no, not in terms of the project that's before you today. Um, we would obviously engage the Coastal Commission uh, if we were to proceed with any sort of repair structure and go through the proper permitting um, and whatnot. But at this point, no, we really don't know what the project is in the future until we do that assessment.
Yeah, I, I guess where I'm coming from to be, try to be transparent is uh, it would, it would seem like uh, um, repair the pier would certainly be an option and wouldn't cause the Coastal Commission staff in Santa Cruz to have objections to it, but I, I don't know. And I'm, I'm just wondering when, when uh, uh, when our contractors start working on designs of options that is some, please, I highly recommend you get some input from the Coastal Commission, just so we're not surprised. I mean, we don't want to be spending a lot of time on things that they're going to give us. Anyhow.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. We would engage them early on in the process.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's smart. Um, Councilmember Coletti, you had further comments?
Uh, just a kind of a follow-up on kind of riffing on what you've just asked. I mean, the city did spend two, almost three years developing a shoreline management plan. And I'm wondering what best practices or policies or programs that came out of that will inform this. Uh, is that a document, a working document you're using as part of this project, Ms. Halby?
The shoreline management plan, Mr. Coletti through the mayor, uh, was more intended to provide continuous coastal recreational access and protect uh, and more draw sea walls and things like that. So it really didn't touch on the pier.
Well, eh, eh, a, a sig- I'm, I'm not challenging that per se, but a, a significant portion of that was armoring. And I think the pier does represent that, at least in, it probably would in the Coastal Commission's view at any rate. So I think uh, I think there is something maybe in that plan that might help inform this. Uh, but I don't have the document in front of me either. It's just following up on what the mayor had asked as far as Coastal Commission uh, involvement. And they, they required that we develop this plan, so it uh, we should look at it. Thank you.
And just to add to that, uh, through the mayor, I did check this rolling management plan, you know, prior to writing this agenda report, and there isn't a mention really of the pier structure in there. So I just want to clarify that.
All right, well, I think we're ready for a vote. Um, good luck with your efforts to understand what's going on with that. Is it a hundred-year-old pier? Or yes, hundred-year plus? Councilmember Emilio?
Uh, I'm really to make a motion, Your Honor.
Please.
Okay, authorized agreement with the GHD for the Lovers Point Pier Repair Assessment in an amount not to exceed nine-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And a vote, please.
Councilmember Emilio?
Hi.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Hi.
Councilmembers Coletti?
Hi.
Padiri?
Hi.
Tomlinson?
Hi.
Mayor Peak?
Hi.
Motion carries six zero one, Councilmember McAdams absent.
Thank you. Moving on to item thirteen B, the thirty percent discount and water entitlement. Councilmember Tomlinson?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I believe, did, did we pass over thirteen A?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead. Yes. Did, thank you. All right, thirteen A, uh, concept discussion. Um, Legends of the Autobahn in Pacific Grove. Director. Cole.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
No problem, Your Honor. Thank you very much um, for having me here tonight. I do have a brief presentation on this item, and again, I do mean it is brief. See that, uh. Show. Okay, very good. Uh, thank you, Your Honor, members of the City Council. Um, tonight I'm here to present a potential, a potential new auto show, The Legends of the Autobahn. Again, tonight, I am here only for a concept review of the item. Um, real quick, the recommendation for tonight is to review a concept um, of this show regarding a proposed full cost recovery special event. If the City Council consensus exists, um, we're seeking you to provide direction to begin the permitting and planning process for The Legends of the Autobahn. Again, full cost recovery special event at Pacific Grove Golf Links and return with event details at the time of the city's special event calendar approval. So some real quick background, in two thousand and seventeen, the City Council approved a special event for an auto auction on the eighteenth hole of the golf course. Uh, after the first year of that event, the city entered into an additional five-year agreement with Worldwide Auctioneers to continue hosting the event. Unfortunately, in years three and four, the event was canceled due to the global pandemic. We all know COVID, we're still dealing with it. And then ultimately, the um, host of the event, Worldwide Auctioneers, terminated the event for year five. Worldwide has been invoiced for the remaining balance owed on the contract, which is approximately sixty-six thousand dollars. That invoice just went out um, a week or so ago. So what is The Legends of the Autobahn? It's an event that consists of approximately four hundred display cards with a hundred to a hundred and fifty spectators. It's significantly less intrusive than the Worldwide Auctioneers event. They do some minor setup the day before and break down the um, the day of the event with maybe some portal potties or some items like that left behind or pick up the next day. But the next day after the event, golf operations would commence as normal. Last year, the event was moved to the fairgrounds the last minute. Um, and they did not really like the scene at the fairgrounds. Pacific Grove Golf Links is a way better venue, so they're looking for something long-term. And they've approached us with the opportunity potentially to host it here. We do have some options. We could host the event on the front nine of the golf course. And what's, what does that mean? The event then would be outside of the coastal zone and a CDP would not be needed, a coastal development permit. This might be the only option we have for year one. We would still need to do significant planning and logistics. For example, where would we put the show cards? What holes would those show cards be on? Where would we park the spectators? All items that we need to flesh out if council authorizes us to move forward with this concept plan. We would like to host the event on the eighteenth hole. We did that significant work out there to host similar events like this. The event would have a sea, a similar configuration to the auto auction. We have a blueprint for it. This is the desired lo- location. The eighteenth hole is less intrusive to golf operations. They can continue keeping golfers on the golf course even the day of the event. But we would need to obtain a CDP. We know how that looks, but there will be time to go through that process. So time is needed. I don't think we could pull it off. If I started today on that CDP, I think I would struggle to be able to get it approved in time for the event to continue planning. Hence why we might need to do it on the front nine of a golf course for this first year. So again, we're just looking for a concept review. Um, what we're requesting is the City Council to authorize the allocation of staff time towards these event or towards this effort. It will take a lot of staff time. If approved, we will commence initial discussion with the event organizers. We will begin the proper permitting. And we will then return to City Council for final approval, as I stated, through the special events calendar. If it's approved, we've got some work to do. We will get down, get that work done, and see if we can figure out how to make this happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, comments from the public?
Uh, yes, sir. Mo Omar, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. I want to thank our deputy city manager, Go, for his time and effort in assisting with this event. And as you know, the chamber, the MCCVB, we spend a lot of time and energy on trying to attract people to Pacific Grove. The nice thing about this event is all the effort and all the funding will come from Legends, which is a nonprofit association BMW Club of America. Uh, the best thing about this event for Pacific Grove, it's complimentary to the people of Pacific Grove and anybody that can come in. There's no admission charge. There's no fee. So it's a, it's a complimentary event, and that's a great thing. Um, we, the chamber will be on board to assist in every possible way. And in closing, I'd like to wish the City Council and staff happy holidays, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Anthony Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Peak and members of the council. Uh, so I heard what Mr. Dan Go said about um, whether or not you would need a coastal development permit. And the requirement for extensive advanced staff time to prepare for this, whether it's on the ninth hole or he calls it front, front nine, or if it's going to be on the eighteenth hole. The question I have is, it, does the advanced staff time get reimbursed by the project? That's not clear. Then going on to the notes that I sent to you in a letter on December thirteenth is the events need a CDP eventually. Um, and there's conditions that need to be applied for that coastal development permit. And generally, those are conservation conditions, special conditions. The contracts with whoever it is should include payments for a conservation program to carry out the special conditions of the coastal development permits. If it's on the front nine, those may not apply, but you should start now. So that if you do carry out a contract this year and it doesn't include a coastal development permit, you should still start the contract with a conservation program that's funded by the um, uh, car people. Um, if not, then maybe you shouldn't be doing the project because we should not be subsidizing a project such as this with higher resources. So I think it's really important to look at the impacts that occur on the Crespe Pond wetland area. Um, those have been documented, well-documented in the past events. And I would really appreciate it if the City Council can incorporate a conservation program into the contract. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Peter Mountier, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for your consideration of this item. Um, Peter Mountier, PG Chamber, we feel uh, that with the loss of the car auction normally held in the same space and at virtually the same time during Car Week, there is a need to fill a void, so to speak, with another car event. Um, and Legends of the Autobahn is a perfect one to do that. It's, it's a high-profile, admission-free event. Um, so it pairs well with kind of the trend of Pacific Grove's historic uh, automobile events during Car Week. It fits in well with what people expect from Pacific Grove. Um, and it's focus on German automotives keeps the event distinctive uh, from some of the others that we already have. Uh, as the report from staff notes, it poses a considerably smaller impact to the golf course. Um, and wherever it lands, the event will showcase our golf links beautifully to car Car Week visitors in a way that the auction just never really could do. Um, and it's important for Pacific Grove to remain relevant next to events with born notoriety like concourse and the big auctions and others that happen beyond our borders. Uh, and we appreciate staff's willingness to consider multiple options on this placement. Uh, and that concludes my comment. We hope you approve the event.
Thank you.
Lisa Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. Worldwide Auctioneers Extended Event presented potential harm to many natural resources. The area at the eighteenth hole is an environmentally sensitive habitat area immediately adjacent to the Crespe Pond wetland, protected in the LCP and across the street from nesting territories of black oyster catchers, which are a U.S. fish and wildlife species of conservation concern. Worldwide's first car auction event in two thousand and seventeen was granted an exemption by the Coastal Commission uh, with an staff, but with an informal understanding about natural resource protections to which the event organizers and Public Works agreed. However, those protections were not carried out. Consequently, the contract allowing five subsequent annual car auction events for Worldwide Auctioneers required a full coastal development permit with special conditions intended to protect sensitive natural resources, but with monitoring left up to city staff. We learned from Coastal Commission staff last year that golf carts shuffling attendees from the parking area to the auction tents during the two thousand and nineteen event, which was the second event under their five-year contract, failed to stay outside the buffer zone for the Crespe Pond wetland. In late two thousand and nineteen, Public Works took a new plan for five more unspecified special events at the eighteenth hole with five-year contracts to the rec board. The rec board recommended much broader public notice and solicitation of public comments rather than approving the plan as requested. Worldwide's violation that year was expected to be taken into account when city staff applied for any additional event contracts. The city effort stalled after strong public protest and then the pandemic. Any future events planned for the eighteenth hole need to observe a buffer area determined by mapping by a qualified wetland biologist to make sure the current buffer is measured properly and adequately protective and barricaded. And the event should be monitored by qualified biologists and other qualified independent contractors rather than city staff who do not have the interests of the wildlife habitat as their priority. This monitoring would apply to the buffer zone, the lighting, and the noise impacts. Fortunately, Worldwide Auctioneers event organizers are gone. Council needs to give staff the direction that coastal resources must be protected more effectively by any future projects such as the proposed event. Furthermore, the city should assess adequate fees to provide an interpretive panel at Crespe Pond to help the community, including city officials and staff, understand its importance as a sensitive habitat area for both resident and migratory birds and other species. And I like my husband's idea of a conservation uh, fund as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
No other hands raised, Mr. Mayor?
Council discussion? And I'll just remind everybody, this is a concept discussion. We're not looking for a vote to approve the, this particular event. Is that correct, Mr. Go? Yeah. Okay.
That's right, you are correct.
Councilmember Coletti.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I appreciate that this is being scoped uh, as a smaller event. Um, will this be a day event only? No, no lights, no lighting for any kind of nighttime activity? That's for Mr. Go.
Yes, Councilmember Coletti through the mayor. Though I don't have those specifics yet because I haven't dove into it because I knew that I wanted to get your blessing before I really dove into the to the event as a whole. It's my understanding that the, in the past, the event has been over by four o'clock in the afternoon. So in August, we would still have five hours of daylight left after the event for all the spectators to vacate and for them to clean up um, after the event. So yeah, it's not anticipated that anything like that would be needed.
Okay, thank you. Are you imagining that there will be onsite parking at the driving range like there has been for the Worldwide uh, auctions?
It was yet to be determined, Councilmember Coletti through the mayor, yet to be determined for the first year. Um, we would have to figure out how we're going to park the spectators on
We would have to figure out how we're going to park the spectators on the front nine of the golf course if that's the avenue we take right off the bat. Um, if we are going to format it very similar to Worldwide Auctioneers, I would anticipate it to be very similar to how we proceeded with that parking format and, uh, um, how we stayed away from the environmentally sensitive areas. And we would have to tweak it a little bit every year with Worldwide Auctioneers. We tweaked it and got a little bit better. Um, unfortunately with years three, four and five, we just weren't able to move forward and perform even to our higher level. But yes, I would anticipate it'd be very similar. It seems to be the, one of the only ways it would work.
Okay, and you're aware of what coastal, Coastal Commission, at least Coastal Staff's expectations are for not only implementing but observing the buffers and the resource protections that will have to go into managing a, 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 a project down there uh, close, close to the Crespe, Crespe Pond, et cetera. So I guess the last question I've got, um, when, would you come back in April or when are you expected to come back or would, could you possibly come back a little sooner uh, as things kind of develop? Or are you just expecting to hit us all at once, once we're, uh, talking about the master fee schedule? Or the, excuse me, the special events?
The special events, it's, I'm anticipating that myself or, uh, Recreation Manager Katie Clark or in combination of us both bring back the special events in February. So we've got to move pretty quick here. We might be able to put it on the calendar and get it approved and still be able to move forward with the logistics and how it's going to look through the planning stages. Maybe up to April, May, and then I could bring it back to city council at that time with exactly how it's going to look and then start my public outreach for the project. I don't know what the event looks like at present moment. Um, and until I have an opportunity to meet with event planners, Courseco, who's going to be a huge partner, the management company at the golf course, until we all meet, I'm not sure how it looks yet. So yes, I would bring this back to city council. I could do it as part of the special events or standalone item.
Right. I guess the question is, as soon as you thought you were getting some, some, some portions of the plan firmed up, that'd be good to get updates instead of getting it all at the end. Um, well, I think that addresses most of my questions on the proposal. One thing I would like to know is the sixty-six thousand dollar invoice that was sent out. We're expecting that to receive payment on that. Is that right?
Councilmember through the mayor, I'm going to have to defer that the, the city manager or the admin services director, Lori Hannah, for response on that. It's not really part of this.
Yeah.
Topic, though it is intertwined.
Yep. I see the city manager shaking his head.
Yeah, through the mayor, uh, Worldwide's CFO did request, uh, well, first of all, the, the CEO asked for the amount owed. The CFO followed up saying, could we please generate an invoice so that we can process payments? So I take those to be both very positive signs that they, uh, in, intend to pay. I did speak with the CEO about it. He, he wants to, to settle his obligation. So we, of course, will follow up, but as Mr. Go indicated, the invoice was just sent out last week. So, um, you know, after the holidays, if, if we haven't received something, I will call Mr. Cruz and/or the CFO about that. So thank you.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. Uh, and my understanding is we, the city paid upfront for some improvements along the Silomar. Uh, and that's what's being reimbursed. Uh, is that correct? And then those improvements were what, about a hundred thousand, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars?
That's correct, Councilmember Clitty. That's, we made the improvements to the eighteenth hole from the T um, towards about halfway up the hole to better accommodate for the auto auction with a reimbursement agreement specified in the contract with Worldwide Auctioneers. That's what they've been invoiced for to make that project we did there whole.
Perfect. Thank you for the update. Appreciate it.
Of course.
Councilmember Kedory.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I, I generally like the concept, uh, Mr. Go, so I, I'm in support of this. Um, I, uh, I had a couple of questions. Uh, the, the auto option, does that imply that, uh, if, uh, if there's a sale happening, the city gets a part of the proceeds?
Mr. Harvey, please.
Through, through the mayor, this is a question that came up a number of times at the start of the auction. The short answer is no. Uh, the way most of these auctions work, many of the purchasers, um, are sophisticated buyers that actually are dealers as individuals. Um, and the, the proceeds, sales ex proceeds do not go uh, to the location where the auction is held in general. There is a small amount sometimes uh, on, on certain sales, but they're largely dispersed elsewhere.
Got it. Thank you. Uh, the, the other question is, um, in the previous contract, uh, seems like we had, um, possibly Worldwide had provided it or we have, we had negotiated to make some improvements. Um, are those improvements complete?
Yes, Councilmember Barry through the mayor, that's correct. Those improvements are complete. We initiated those improvements prior to the second year of the auto auction to better accommodate the event on the eighteenth hole. Um, they are completed and, um, as Councilmember Clitty alluded to, that's what we're requesting the payment for to reimburse the city for those improvements that we made.
Got it. And so my, my question is really if, if five years ago we had negotiated something, uh, around improvements, uh, potentially just something to consider, maybe, uh, we can request something here too, uh, related to improvements, maybe for the first two, nine holes or, or the eighteenth hole, if there's anything pending there, or anything a, additional that we can think of, uh, just a food for thought. But thank you.
Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and thank you Director Go for this. Uh, I'm very much in, in support of the concept review as you've brought it forward. Um, I think, you know, the worldwide auction leaving is, is fine. Um, and, and moving towards figuring out how to bring in another, you know, medium scale event to Pacific Grove is something that definitely interests me. Um, I think it will be great advertising and great for our community to be participating. I like that it's on a Thursday and not, um, you know, too in, in competition with the, some of the main events, but, um, I, I'd love for it to work out. I do, uh, have the same sentiment of, and, and I fully expect that your team and you will keep the environmental concerns at, in mind as you go forward with what's possible and, and where the best solution is. Um, i- if we have to take a look at options in parallel, i.e. the nineteen or eighteenth green as well as the, the front nine, um, and, and see if timing works out. I think that, that's an idea I would, I would put out there. I'll leave it to you on whether that's a, a pipe dream or, or whether that could, you know, could actually work out. But if, if the eighteenth green is the best, but we need to have the mitigation and the Coastal Commission's approval, then, you know, let's not delay, uh, and, in getting that approval, even if we got that approval now for the following year, um, i- it would be there, right? It, we know it takes time. And so while we're thinking about it and planning for it, um, it might be an idea to, to set that in motion, knowing that it won't be this year, but it would be the following years. Um, I'm not, I'm not saying that the eighteenth green is the best spot. Yeah, I know that you need to look at it and find out whether there, work with Courseco and, and the vendor and, and find out whether, um, somewhere on the front nine works as well. So, um, if, if I can be of any help as you, as you plan it out, be happy to. I think it's a great idea. Um, especially if, if done well with the considerations of the environment and considerations of our, of our neighbors in this, in this community, air, you know, in that particular area right there, um, that would, that will be affected. Um, but I love the idea and I'm fully supportive of, of, of new special events for our town. Thank you.
Councilmember Emilio.
Thank you, uh, Your Honor. Um, I'm also in support of this, uh, which has been said already, but I also want to add that, uh, this would be, it's a one-day event. It's a one-day event and I think it'll be great for, uh, businesses, uh, for example, the grill. Um, people attending things in town after the event. I truly believe that. So, thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh, Director Go for bringing this forward for council discussion. I guess I, I look at this, uh, uh, for this year as a first date. Let's, uh, get to know each other a little better and find out expectations in both directions. So I, I support this and, uh, definitely, um, I think it's very, very wise to avoid the coastal zone. Uh, so, uh, at least for now. So you don't have to go through a CDP or process. And I'm just wondering about the, the size of the event. Uh, four hundred cars sounds like, um, that's going to take, uh, maybe several, uh, holes. I don't know, um, uh, the area. So just consideration, maybe, um, shrink their expectations a little bit. Anyhow, thank you. And, um, I had heard that, uh, staff will be, uh, our staff time will be paid for by the BMW Club of, of America. Just wanted to confirm that with you. So correct?
Typically with these type of events, the special event application fee is supposed to handle the staff time to process the event and so on and so forth. And then the day of the event staff time is usually or the planning event staff time, like the week abut before, is encompassed into the recovery. This is going to be an unusual one, specifically when we do get into a coastal development permit and any type of environmental review that is structured around that, that permit. Um, when I do meet with event organizers, I will explain to them that there will be a cost associated with those efforts. And I will begin discussions with them on potential recouping of those initial efforts. But it's not typical that staff at my level would be requesting those type of reimbursements to try to, um, just plan and bring the event into the city.
I, I under-
That makes sense.
Yes, a- absolutely. And then I'm not trying to say anything that, you know, hamstring you, tie your hands on this to, it's sort of, uh, um, a little bit of goodwill on our effort to, to, uh, get things started. But on, on the other hand, if it, if it looks like, um, their expectations far exceed what we could reasonably provide, then we need to know that. You need to make that decision as soon as, soon as you can. Uh, so we're not, you know, using your time and your staff's time. Anyhow, so good luck.
Thank you.
And we're on to item, the next item, thirteen B. Now it's on to thirty percent discount for water entitlement sales. Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mayor. And, uh, Ms. Hunter is going to kick it off for us.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Tomlinson. Um, good evening, Mayor and council members and members of the public. I don't have a presentation. I will just briefly go over, uh, what has been included in your agenda report and rely a little bit on Councilmember Tomlinson and the city manager to fill in, in details that might be needed. But, um, as you know, last year, your council approved this thirty percent discount on the fee schedule. Uh, and this brings forward again to, uh, the council to do the same thing for the upcoming fee schedule. This discount was initially established to assist in meeting city goals, which include increasing the housing supply, promoting visitor service opportunities and encouraging renovation. In an effort to continue promoting these activities as well as accommodate any residents or businesses that may have a deferred a water entitlement purchase due to COVID nineteen, consider extending the discount for another year. Uh, the current rate shown on the fee schedule is two hundred and fifty thousand per acre feet or twenty-one thousand for point one zero acre feet. When the thirty percent discount is applied to the stated fee, the amount is reduced to a hundred and seventy-five thousand per acre foot or seventeen thousand five hundred for a tenth acre foot. As of November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, the city has generated approximately five hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars in revenues from the sale of water entitlements. And the average transaction amount was approximately seventy-eight hundred dollars. Uh, just for your information, at this point, we have approximately sixteen acre feet for residential and commercial use and, uh, approximately nine acre feet for affordable housing development, which includes accessory dwelling units. Uh, we've sold water for about forty-four accessory dwelling units to date. Uh, that's it for my report. I do want to hand it over to councilperson Tomlinson if, if she has any additional comments. And then, um, if the city manager has anything else to say. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Director Hunter. Um, I will add, Mayor Peak, that, uh, this was, just going back first, we, we do have two council or, I think, two council members who weren't here in May of twenty nineteen when we had the lengthy discussion about how to price the water and, uh, you know, from what I remember, there was the desire of council to possibly price it even lower than where we're at right now. Uh, but it was im- imperative or legally really required that we set it at a market rate. And, um, so, so that gets you up to that two fifty market rate, uh, for where we are on the peninsula. And then, um, from there, we were able to apply the discount. And in, again, in May, our thoughts were to have it carry till December with a hope of kind of stimulating sales and allowing, um, a discount for the early movers, if you will, and then have it go back to full rate, uh, after that in twenty twenty. Well, you know, hindsight's always twenty twenty and I think that this is not something people move on quickly. Uh, the, they, they need time and it, it, for whether it be residents or businesses, it just takes time to develop and do remodels and put in ADUs and, um, and so six months of a, of a discount uh, to stimulate movement wa- was kind of a non-starter. And that's why we extended it for twenty twenty. Um, and, and so during that time, you know, it's COVID and, uh, possibly some, some more slow ability for, for development, um, whether it be businesses or residential, um, we did, we do have a lot of, um, remodels and things going on and, and processing through the, um, the department. But, uh, nonetheless, I, I feel strongly that carrying out the thirty percent discount for another year for that kind of being the, the rate for Pacific Grove makes a lot of sense and it's business friendly. Um, and it will help us meet our goals of being able to provide more affordable housing and just more housing in general, whether it's, uh, in any category. So the agenda report was written that way to kind of, uh, tell the story and, um, provide some of the, the reasoning behind um, why this helps us meet our council goals. Um, and I'll, I'll stop there and, and maybe make some comments after we hear what the public has to say and the rest of the council. So, thank you, Mayor.
Any public comment on this agenda?
Yes, sir. Anthony Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Good evening again. Uh, Mayor Peak and members of the council. I think this is an excellent program. I think the thirty percent should be extended, but only for residential projects, only for ADUs, only for affordable housing. Eliminate the commercial. I think it's, uh, uh, I think that was the, one of the things that Councilmember Tomlinson just said was the most important aspect of this is to increase the residential, um, units and the commercial aspect of the residential units, but not to increase.
units and the commercial aspect of the residential units, but not to increase commercial development itself. Um, throughout California, the entire state, we, we need more houses. We need more places for people to live. And anything you can do, this thirty percent, I think, will contribute to how Pacific Grove can accomplish that. Um, the notion of expanding that or continuing to expand it to include, um, retail or offices, uh, and that sort of thing does not make sense, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Inga Lawrence and Doymer, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor Council. Um, I think I understand where, uh, Councilmember Tomlinson is coming from and certainly where Mr. Chiani is coming from. And the problem I have is with our local water project, which still, to my knowledge, does not have a business plan. It is in the red, it loses money, bleeds money because it's not sustainable. And I really am wondering what's happening with that business plan and how it's gonna get on an even keel and not borrow six hundred thousand dollars from our sewer fund, which is absolutely taxpayer money. So I have a problem with that because we don't yet have a business plan for it. And I really think that we need to move quickly on that. I, uh, I also would like to thank Councilmember Tomlinson for digging up the, uh, April twenty nineteen letter from the State Water Board. And I would also like to, uh, encourage all councilmembers to especially scrutinize, age three, the last two paragraphs and especially the footnote, footnote one, in that State Water Board letter because you're certainly going to need to know that information for upcoming hearings. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
No other hands are raised, Mr. Mayor.
All right, council, um, discussion on this item. Councilmember Padori.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I do think that, uh, we, we have not yet seen the, um, after effects of COVID for, uh, in relation to water entitlement. Um, and I think, uh, what we've done so far, I think we need to continue that, uh, through twenty twenty-two, uh, to actually see where we stand there. So in general, I'm supportive, uh, with, with the idea here. Uh, I wanted to find out, uh, if we have any sense of, uh, how much acre feet is left, uh, from the forty-seven point eight eight acre feet, uh, how much is left today for, uh, not like the regular, I don't know what you call the, the, the acre feet, which is not allocated to a- a- affordable housing. Uh, could we get a sense of how much is left there, as well as how much is left for affordable housing?
Yes, uh, through the mayor, I believe the total, uh, residential and commercial combined is sixteen acre feet with nine acre feet for, uh, dedicated for affordable housing.
Can you speak up, Allison, I'm not hearing you.
Can you hear me now?
You're gonna have to speak up, yeah, a little bit.
And actually, um-
What, what were those numbers again, please?
I have sixteen acre feet and nine acre feet for the affordable category.
Okay.
And is, is the, uh, thank you for that, uh, Director Hunter, uh, the, um, is the, uh, did this resolution go, it looks like it went into effect nineteen, twenty. So do we have a sense of like how it's trending year over year? Because that's, that's primarily where I'm going with this, is, uh, at, at the end of next year, I want to find out, um, is the trend going upward, downward, uh, where, where do we stand with it, uh, in general? Uh, so that's something that to consider as we monitor this in the future, is to just, uh, see how, how it's trending, generally speaking. Uh, and then, uh, the, the final note here is, uh, I, I, I know there, this, this year, especially starting next year, we're gonna be with this, uh, whole season desist order, uh, and, and its ramifications, uh, and I wanted to know if the market price for water, uh, is that go- is that two fifty thousand, uh, is that still the market price for water today? And I would like to assess where the market price is next year, because the season desist order is gonna have implications. And, and I think that we need to factor that into account as we go to the future. So something to take into account as well. Uh, but I appreciate, uh, all that, uh, everyone has done here, including Councilmember Tomlinson. Thank you for bringing this, and, and I'm supportive of the idea.
Councilmember Colletti.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I, I think I'll, um, I think I'll start off by, uh, kind of addressing what, uh, Councilmember Padori was asking as far as the trend, uh, in terms of amount that's been sold. So the district, the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District recognizes thirty-eight point three-nine acre feet of our uh, for an entitlement for Pacific Grove. That's how much the district recognizes, and that's how much they're willing to permit against, thirty-eight point three-nine. We, according to the district's latest report, and they report on this monthly, by the way, it's part of their, uh, uh, ongoing report, um, reporting, uh, we have sold approximately three point six acre feet. And we've given away three point five acre feet in terms of a promissory note. So roughly, we've given away half, uh, financed at zero cost down for five twenty lighthouse. And we've sold about that same amount, about three and a half acre feet. So trending, you know, we've sold about ten percent of our total entitlement recognized by the district. And eventually, I suppose, we'll sell the other three point five, uh, for five twenty lighthouse, those luxury condos. Now, I, one thing I, I am a little interested, the timing on this. I was sure, you know, I was, I was very hopeful and I'm very disappointed that we didn't receive it. I was hopeful that we were gonna get a report on the, on the financial feasibility of the local water project. You know, that was promised to us, it was promised to council back in October of twenty twenty. And here we are in December of twenty twenty-one. We haven't seen a business plan. We have borrowed, or loaned rather, six hundred thousand dollars from a sewer enterprise fund to the local, uh, water project fund to shore it up. And it's basically losing about a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars a year. I, I wanted to see that prior to discussing, uh, how we can continue a discounted rate for the entitlement water. Um, so maybe that's coming, I, I think it was supposed to come in, in December. Um, but, you know, I don't want, one thing that's kind of problematic about this as well is that we kind of, we're doing this every December, it seems now, kind of bringing back the water entitlement sales discount, discussing it in December. And I think we just need to get this in sync with the master fee schedule and not have this, uh, separate event that we do, separate annual event where we, we talk about what the discount rate for the, for the water entitlement, uh, water will be. We should just do that as part of setting the master fee schedule and not have this separate event. So I, I would suggest we do that. So I would suggest we only make this, if we do approve the thirty, uh, continuing the thirty percent discount, I would suggest we only do that up until the time when we next consider our master fee schedule, which I think will be coming up, well, someone else can address that. Uh, I think it's at the end of June, um, is when it, uh, the next, or July first is when the new one becomes effective. So, wh- uh, do we keep doing this? Yeah, I mean, and Mr. Chiani brought up an interesting point, too, uh, about can we have different rates, uh, um, for residential activity versus commercial activity. I've got a question for, um, the city attorney, Mr. Laredo. Mr. Laredo, can you set up differential fees when you're essentially selling the same, uh, the same commodity?
Um, as long as the city makes findings as the reason for doing that, what we have to do is come up with, uh, we have to be concerned about due process, and, uh, uh, people of a similar class are entitled to the same fee. So then the question is, what differentiates classes? And the count, that's within the, uh, realm of discretion for the council to define those classes as long as it's not arbitrary and capricious.
But you can run into equal protections problems and all sorts of stuff, right?
That, that, that is correct, that is the concern. Uh, i- if, if the classes are not clearly defined and are not substantially based in terms of fact, then, uh, the, the unequal treatment would be a violation of law.
Okay, thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Laredo. Well, something to think about for later, um, I would like to see this only run until the end of the fiscal year, and then we integrate it as into, uh, our master fee schedule. Um, and then I think maybe the city manager might have an update on our local water project, uh, business plan. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Harvey.
Forgive me, uh, thank you, Councilmember Colletti, through the mayor, just wanted to, uh, advise council, uh, pursuant to direction, uh, the draft business plan has been reviewed and scrutinized by, um, a contracted third party, and we antes- we anticipate being able to bring, uh, back their findings in that area at the, uh, first meeting in February.
Mayor Protempuri Smith.
Thank you, um, yeah, so I think that, uh, I tend to agree about, um, syncing up the fees, I don't, it's just an extra item, so I think anytime we can put it together with where, where it is, I think that's a good idea, so I do agree with that, and I think we should do that next year. Um, I'm totally supportive of continuing the co- post-COVID recovery COVID, uh, discount. Um, but I would, I would actually agree that we should sync it up with our fee schedule, because otherwise we're gonna have to have it on another agenda next year in December. So, um, I also agree that we, uh, should get, you know, I'm interested to see the business plan, and I think that, uh, since it'll be done early next year, it'll be timely for having it come back with the master fee schedule. Um, and, let's see what else, there was a lot of good comments, um. I don't, I mean, it's a little elusive, I think, the value of water, given all of the activity in, in the water area right now, there's just so much activity. Uh, there's a lot, there's a little bit of, there's a lot of uncertainty, I mean, we have, Monterey One has, uh, its project coming online and, and, and water, we're gonna be, uh, adding water early next year as well to the, to the water supply for the peninsula, so that's a big deal. I don't know how that, that could impact the price of water, I'm not sure. Um, I, I'm certainly with Councilmember Padori on, that should be something that we try to do as a city, is monitor that and understand that as well as we can. It, it's extremely complicated, and I understand that even people that have been working in this area for years, uh, in municipal areas still have a hard time figuring that kind of stuff out, and so we just do give it, we use our best people to figure out the best thing we can, but, that, I agree with this, um, I think increasing the housing supply would be a good thing, um, and I think that uh, I, I'm, also want it to be for commercial, um, you know, we, we have a lot of empty storefronts right now, and i- it's a good thing to try to promote our businesses, um, in, in town, so that's kind of where I'm at with it, um, but thank you for bringing this up, and, all right, guys.
I'll also, uh, um, thank Councilmember Tomlinson and Director Hunter for, um, bringing this topic to council. Um, I agree with, uh, keeping the thirty percent, uh, discount, and I also agree that we need to put this in the master fee schedule. The master fee schedule already has the, I'll call it the base water entitlement, uh, cost of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per acre feet year. It just doesn't have the, uh, the discount, and I think that, that then puts us in sync. Every year about May, we'd have the opportunity to, uh, relook at the, uh, the discount in the base rate. And there's this, as this discussion among council has illustrated, this question, water touches, so, there's so many aspects to it. There's the local water project and its business plan and how, uh, what are its finances, and I, I'm very anxious to, to, uh, see that plan. And then, uh, the Councilmember Padori brought up, uh, what basically was a supply and demand question, a little free market question. What is, uh, what is this water, um, what is the market determined this, this water is worth? And though we haven't done that for, you know, this discussion, we don't have that information, I think we have an indication that, you know, we're, we're having, uh, modest ongoing water sales, and, and so I don't think we're giving it away, but at the other hand, um, um, you know, it's not too dear that people aren't buying it, so I, I think we actually fell into a pretty good, uh, uh, place. And, um, I just wanna make comment about the, what's water rights left for affordable housing? That was a, was an action by council to sort of set aside, hey, we're gonna set aside this water, we're only gonna sell this for affordable housing. And, uh, so that's just something that council did, and council, obviously, future councils can change that, uh, as well. So, those are my thoughts. Councilmember Tomlinson, and then Councilmember Emilio.
Thanks, Mayor, and, um, I'm, I'm happy to make a motion, but I, I did have one other comment in that I, I also agree with having this go rather than a whole year, but until the master fee schedule so that we can kind of reapprove it when, when that timing comes up, that makes complete sense. Um, and I would like to ask staff to possibly just reiterate or, or even step up the effort to allow this, uh, to be publicized and advertised and, and written in the master fee schedule that it is, yes, while it says it's two hundred and fifty thousand an acre foot, it's currently, um, on sale, if you will, but, uh, until, with, with an end date, and, um, and, and make it be known so that the interest continues and, and people realize, um, this is a finite amount of water, and while it may last some, some certain years, well, that we're gonna all remember, it won't last forever, and so, um, being able to get it at, at a decent rate is, um, I, I think it's a good thing, and so I, I, I want folks to understand and, and realize that, so I don't know if it's publicizing it or advertising it, or, or, but, but printing it and making sure that it, that it's well-known is, um, I think a good idea. So should I make a motion, Mayor?
Please.
Okay. Um, I move this to direct the city manager to apply a thirty percent discount to the water entitlement price shown on the master fee schedule through the, um, the date of which the master fee schedule would be modified, um, around summertime. I don't have that exact date.
June thirtieth, well, July one.
Till July one, okay, of twenty-
It goes, goes by fiscal year.
I'll also second that.
May we have a vote, please?
Yes, sir. Uh, Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Emilio?
Aye.
Councilmembers Colletti?
Aye.
Padori?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Mayor Protemp Smith?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero one. Councilmember McAdams absent.
Thank you. On our amended uh, agenda, we have, well, the original agenda fifteen A closed session. Um, that has been deleted and we've added a special meeting. We had to notice it as a special meeting so we could uh, um, put out an agenda report and discuss this in public. And uh, let me check with our city clerk. Are we still on the same Zoom session? We are.
Yes, Your Honor, we can, we can uh, have a smooth transition to the uh, item on the special agenda.
Okay, great.
Here.
Great, like, um. So what I'm uh, suggesting is we take a uh, a short break, say to uh. Eight twenty three. And then we'll start the special meeting. We'll need to do a roll call just to keep ourselves legitimate. Okay, is that Councilmember Tomlinson, you had your hand raised?
Sorry, I just realized, I lowered it.
Okay.
I'm ready for a break.
Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna just adjourn this meeting. But just stay on, everybody stay on, and um, we'll be back right here in this Zoom session. At uh, eight twenty three, okay? Thank you.